Mr. Bax.
Yeah.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye, motion carried. Superintendent, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under Superintendent Action Items for the Board's consideration this evening. Number one, to approve the purchase order to CDWG for Chromebooks for second grade throughout the district. This is not to exceed $45,000. This purchase order will be supported by the general fund. And you're going to see as I move along, there's a lot of purchases of Chromebooks and supplies for this coming school year. Item number two, to approve the multi-year purchase order to achieve 3,000 for differentiated literacy solution platform access for students, teachers, and parents with on-site professional. This is not to exceed $165,000. This purchase order will be supported by the general fund and Title Grant Funds. Item number three, to approve the purchase order to CDWG for Chromebooks for Alaria High School. This is not to exceed $78,500. This purchase order will be supported by the general fund. Item number four, approval of stipends. To approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $100 per day, not to exceed one day, to the following teachers for their participation in the TECKY Club curriculum work. This stipend will be supported by Title IV Grant Funds. The second item, $100 per day, not to exceed two days to the following teacher for their participation in the math curriculum work in vision guidance. This stipend will be supported by Title I and Title II-A Grant Funds. The next bullet, $100 per day, not to exceed one day to the following Eastern Heights teacher for their participation in the BLT professional development planning. This stipend will be supported by Title II-A Grant Funds. The next item, $100 per day, not to exceed one day to the following McKinley teachers for their participation in the BLT professional development planning. This stipend will be supported by the Title I and Title II-A Grant Funds. $20 per hour, not to exceed 75 hours to the following parent per coordinator for their participation in the parent engagement activities at Franklin School over the summer. This stipend will be supported by the school improvement grant funds. Franklin BLT professional development planning for staff that is hourly and will be paid at the hourly wage. This stipend will be supported by the Title I and Title II-A Grant Funds. $100 per day, not to exceed one day to the following for attending Franklin BLT professional development planning. This stipend will be supported by the Title I and Title II-A Grant Funds. The next item, $50 per one half-day, not to exceed one half-day to the following teachers for attending running records professional development. This stipend will be supported by the Title I and Title II-A Grant Funds. Item number five, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $50 per half-a-day, not to exceed one half-day to the following special education teachers for transition planning. This stipend will be supported by the general funds. Item six, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. $14.47 per hour, not to exceed 130 hours for extended school year summer camp attendant. This stipend will be supported by the general fund. Item number seven, to approve the overnight field trip for Northwood Middle School eighth grade students to Virginia and Washington DC on May 22 through the 24, 2019, as detailed in enclosure K7. Item number eight, to approve the overnight athletic field trip for the Alaria High School Girl Soccer Team to attend team soccer camp July 10 through the 12, 2018 at Cleveland State University in Cleveland, Ohio, as detailed in enclosure K8. Item number nine, to approve the contract with Educational Service Center of Northeastern Ohio, PEP, for the 2018-19 school year, as detailed in enclosure K9. This is our annual contract with PEP for students with special needs. Item number 10, Meta, to approve the Meta Solutions Master Service Agreement and schedules for fiscal year 19, as detailed in enclosure K10. Item number 11, very proud to present this one, to approve the Sponsor Burst Incorporated Marketing Agreement, as detailed in enclosure K11. Item number 12, to approve the contract with Suburban School Transportation Company for the 2018-19 school year, as detailed in enclosure K12. Item number 13, to authorize the extension and amendment of the agreement between the Alaria City School District Board of Education and SEDEXO Management Incorporated dated July 1, 2014, for the management and operation of our food service program in the Alaria City School District for a period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, as approved by legal counsel, as detailed in enclosure K13. Finally, to approve the contract with the Educational Service Center, Project Search, for our 2018-19 school year, as detailed in enclosure K14. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Superintendent as presented?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Superintendent, is it action items?
Mm-hmm.
With a potential modification to the contract with Sponsor Burst, as discussed with counsel earlier today.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Karstarfin.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Today, I spoke with the Board's attorney, Howard Lane, and there were some concerns on the Sponsor Burst contract that we discussed for the naming rights. And it looked like, based on the exclusivity paragraph, that if somebody came to us with dollars, they would still get their 20%. So Howard kind of changed a little bit of the wording around, and so I'd like to make the motion with the changes that Howard already spoke with Sponsor Burst.
I spoke with the representative today and provided him with a revised section for the exclusivity provision. He approved that. I amended the contract. It should include the revised provision. I have provided a copy of that revised contract to Superintendent Jama.
I do have the revised contract.
Oh, okay. So with that being in your presentation, then, do we need to do that?
What I'd like to do is if, do you want to, after we vote on it, Mr. Elick, I was going to have him come forward and just speak for a second or two.
Sure, sure. The question, Dr. Jama, was, in your presentation to us, did it include the change to the contract?
Oh, yes, yes, it did.
So we do not need the modification?
That is correct. The form that I got today from Howard does have the changes.
Okay. So let me just change that to then just approve.
Approve, yeah.
Can I do that?
You can. Do I have, Ms. Karstarfin, do you concur?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple things. What is Suburban School Transportation Company?
It's transportation for our students who have special needs and need additional support and services.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah.
And also, can we change the name of Ely Stadium? Maybe masking? Do we know that?
I think we spoke about that. That has been brought up before. Paul, help me out with this. I believe we've always intended to keep the name.
Ely Stadium.
Ely Stadium.
Yeah.
But the naming rights of the facility, the press box, the field, the stands, the fieldhouse, but the name of the stadium will remain the same as Ely. That has been brought up through discussions, and even in my talks with Java Jama, that has always been stated, to somehow keep the name, Ely Stadium, at Mike G. Hart Field, things of that nature. Yes.
Is that, did he buy that? Are we legally obligated, or is that more of a preference?
I think that's when we went through all the talk sessions.
There's no obligation.
There is none, that's correct.
There was an old misconception that when the family donated a stadium, it would always have that name. We found out since then that there's no such indication. You can call that land anything that you want, but I think the popular opinion has been that it's Ely Stadium, as Dr. Jama said, such and such field to add to Ely Stadium. Press box, box drive, located in Ely Stadium. But we are allowed to do it where we thought for decades we were, not that we wanted to, but we were under the impression we could. We did find out that we could, but I haven't told you until we had a plan.
Okay. Any other discussion? Since we have a motion and a second, Madam Treasurer, recall roll.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye, motion carried. Personnel Action Items.
I just wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go right ahead.
I'm Vince Hoffer with Sponsor Burst. Really excited to start Brunswick Auto Mart Stadium. That's about three-quarters of a million dollars. So it's really, it's, we have a ballpark in mind that we would like to achieve. No guarantees in that, but realistically, based on some of the other stadiums we have accomplished, we have, we do have a realistic target. And to, like, so for the, we are totally on board to keep it LI Stadium.
Ely Stadium.
Ely Stadium.
Sorry, Ely Stadium.
So I, as mentioned, used to work for VJ Tour. We had a tournament, Memorial Tournament, is never going to change, presented by Nationwide Insurance, Nationwide. So that's how you can, you can implement that. So if you wanted to, you could have, you know, ABC Supply Field at Nationwide Stadium. You could, you could have accommodated that. And we are on board to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Have you started?
Yes.
And what's your timeframe?
We'd like to have everything established by the home opener. So for our sake, realistically, we'd probably want everything within the next 30 days so that way, everything can be properly installed or added into. That, and part of our contract, that includes, like, the signage and everything that takes place for that as well.
And are you looking at all different-sized businesses besides super-large companies?
Yeah. So there are, there's a scope we can do. I mean, anything, we'll do banners, all the way up to naming rights, really anything. Ultimately, we can customize a package for a company based on a budget. We really wouldn't write anybody off at that point. We want to make sure we can maximize brand exposure, so it's mutually beneficial for both sides.
And do you have the information from the high school? There's a number of sponsors here for this facility right here, but I think we're in the Rotary, Wi-Fi Cafe.
We would love to learn more about that and open to hearing more about partners that may be interested in other opportunities that are out there.
Cool. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Personnel Action Items, Dr. Jama. Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under Personnel Actions, as recommended by the Superintendent for the Board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the resignation of the certified administrative staff members, as detailed below. Michelle Bugah and Jen Fitch. Again, we're losing two wonderful staff members, and I want to wish them the best of luck as they start a next chapter in their lives in a new position. Item number two, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff member, as detailed below. Samantha Roder, grade two, teacher, Northwood. Wish her the best of luck. Item number three, to approve the termination, as detailed below. The termination of the following long-term substitute contract for the 17-18 school year on June 13, 2018. Item number four, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff, as detailed below. And as you know, now we get into the hiring time, where we're filling positions throughout the district, and I'll be bringing you names over the next couple of months. First one, Harold Belazari. He will be a new counselor at the Alaria High School. Evan Beskan, elementary vocal music, Crestwood, Ely, McKinley. Alexis Chismadilla, intervention specialist, Edie Franklin. Manir Jabber, science teacher, Alaria High School. Sydney Janigan, music vocal, Northwood. Sarah Sadler, intervention specialist, Northwood. And Matthew Sawerka, social studies teacher, Alaria High School, as well as some of our summer camp workers, summer school teachers, our auxiliary services, and our parent coordinators. Item number five, to approve the payment for up to 20 hours at the employees' per diem rate for providing additional student scheduling and enrollment for a period June 14 through August 21, 2018. This is something we started several years back, and it's something that works out wonderful for our students and our community, whereby when students do have a question, they are able to come into the Alaria High School and actually meet with the counselor over the summer months, rather than wait the week before school starts. Item number six, to approve the payment of stipends, as listed below. Kristen Metz, up to 80 hours during the summer to complete autism scholarship obligations, as required by the Ohio Department of Education, and presenting professional development to staff. Also, Chad Hughes, one of our new assistant principals at the Alaria High School, five days for transitioning purposes after August 1. We, we all know how important it is to work with the person you're replacing, and that transitioning is critical to starting out successfully. Item number seven, to approve Abigail Frasher, parent per coordinator, to work June 9, 2018 to August 1, 2018, at $20 per hour. This is funded by the school improvement grant. Item number eight, to approve the recommendation of the supplemental review committee, per the memorandum of understanding. This is the changes in the supplemental contracts. Item number nine, to approve the unpaid leave of absence of the following certified staff, as detailed below. Item number 10, to approve the appointment of the following classified administrators, as detailed below. We have several here tonight, but Jacob Carmaney will be our new business services director, and Bobby Hyde will be our new executive specialist for human resources. Item number 11, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff members, as detailed below. Item 12, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff, as detailed below. Summer interns in substitute building operations. Item number 13, to approve the revised appointment of the following classified staff member, as detailed below, from a previous meeting. Number 14, to approve the reassignment of the following classified staff members, as detailed below. And these are students going from so many hours to a new set amount of hours. Item 15, approval of stipend, to approve the stipend, not to exceed 40 hours for additional assignments and projects related to graduation at the hourly rate for the following administrative assistant, as detailed below. And that's with Patty Staler, who does a yeoman's job, as you had said earlier, Mike, with how well graduation operates. It's due to the time and commitment that staff members put in. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations this evening under personnel.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a recommendation by the Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bax. Any discussion?
Question. Does that mean we get Mr. Taylor to introduce anybody today?
We sure do, Mr. Elick.
Do we?
We're going to take advantage of him while he's still here.
Still here, all right.
Any other discussion?
We should vote first.
We got to vote first, Mr. Taylor.
Madam Treasurer, if you call the roll.
Mr. Elick.
We're excited, too, but.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Gephardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye. Motion carried. Mr. Taylor.
All right. Is this the swan song? Can you hear me now? No, it's not. I'd like to, you know, grace you as long as humanly possible, so I hope I'll be back for numerous more before August 1, and perhaps some encore performances in the 18-19 school year, if that's good for you all. But thank you, Dr. Jama, board members, Treasurer Clickinger, audience. We are in the middle of a lot of hiring. You talk about a lot of this work, you ought to try it on our end. We've been very, very busy, all of our principals, teacher, teacher selection teams, goes on and on. We've had a lot of changes. I think we have currently 16 teachers right now, new to the district, that have either been hired or are in the queue, and many of them are here. They've been anxiously awaiting your vote of approval tonight. I'd like to introduce them. Harold Belazare, Harold, if you could stand up, new EHS school counselor. Evan Beskan, elementary music teacher. Evan, thank you. Let's see if I can get this right, Alexis. Alexis Chismadilla, Franklin Chismadilla. Should be Franklin Intervention Specialist. Sidney Janigan, did I get that right, Sidney?
Janigan.
Janigan. Also, music teacher over at Northwood. Matthew Sawerka, here at Alaria High Social Studies. Bobby Hyde, who's been very patient over here, we're replacing Barb Mazaros in Human Resources. And last but not least, Jake Carmaney, who will be replacing Jim Wall as the business services director. Welcome you all to the Alaria Pioneer Family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Dr. Jama, anything else?
I have several items I'd like to share with you under Superintendent's report, but again, welcome to each of you to the Pioneer Family. And when we say Pioneer Family, we mean that, folks. You become part of a family when you join the Alaria City Schools. And it's something we're very proud of, and we stand by each and every single day. Couple items that I'd like to share with the Board of Education. I know the last two weeks have been extremely busy with schools closing, with groundbreaking taking place, but again, the two groundbreaking celebrations that took place, both at Ely and at Hamilton, were amazing. The crowds that came out was extremely wonderful to see, and the excitement and the joy on the people's faces as those are put together. And again, that just does not happen, those groundbreakings. It's ABG, it's Paul, it's AE Comm, it's Amy, it's all the people coming together to do what's best. And again, it shows in each of those, each of those groundbreakings. Also, I will say, this past week, we had a wonderful, wonderful celebration of life for Lisa Lick that took place at Franklin Elementary School. It was wonderful to see all the students in their red shirts, and the staff in their red shirts, with her favorite quote on the shirt. Very moving, her family was there. It was a sad occasion, but it was a very touching occasion because she touched so many lives. And the entire group sung a song, "This Little Light of Mine," and I didn't realize that the name Lick means light. And the song was very beneficial for everybody to sing. It was wonderful. Pioneer Academy, I think it speaks for itself, folks. We took a chance with this about a year ago, and we are constantly looking at ways to improve our community. We're constantly looking at ways to improve our school system. And I'll tell you, the team in place is just amazing. You know, as you heard tonight, we had 27 kids who earned a high school diploma. A year ago or prior to this program, they would not have graduated. So we have 27 people out there who are holding a high school diploma now that would not have had one. So kudos to the Pioneer Academy team with Sarge and his team. Another proud moment that I'd like to share with the board, and I know when I got hired on, one of the goals, or one of the things you mentioned, was you wanted to try to keep enrollment stable, at least stop it from declining massively as we saw some trends taking place over the years. And I asked Denise Blatt today to give me the latest update. We're currently at about 6,300 students. We have approximately 220 students in the queue to enroll. We are far exceeding enrollment to where we thought we would be three years ago at this point. We thought we'd be below 5,000, or below 6,000 students, and we're not near that. And people say, why is that happening? Why? Because we have a staff that comes together, we're a family, and we do what's best for kids. And we have programs in place, such as the Tech Club and the Pioneer Academy. Again, it's because of things like that, that we do each and every single day as a team, that draw these folks into our school district. And there's no doubt in my mind, when these buildings start going up, you're going to even see an increase with enrollment as we go forward. People say, what's your biggest concern? My biggest concern is, or fear, but it's not really a fear, it's a fear with excitement that when we open all these new schools, we have more students than we know what to do with, and we have to do some additional types of brainstorming to figure out how we handle all the kids. And that would be a good problem to have. And then finally, you know, somebody had mentioned earlier about graduation and about the Special Olympics and the parking. The parking was amazing. Kudos to Jim Wall and his team, Alec and Kelly, for doing a wonderful job with that. That could have been an absolute disaster when you think about 5,000 people coming in without parking. And it was handled professionally, it was handled properly. Kudos to the bus garage. And I'll tell you what I'm hearing now, why don't you continue to shuttle rather than park for graduation? So that's something we're going to look at next year, see if it's beneficial to shuttle rather than park, and we'll go from there. But folks, just an amazing school year. It's been a school year, somebody said it today, it was like a EKG machine. The school year, we had our ups, and we had some very, very deep lows. But the thing that I'm proud of the most is we stuck together as a family, we did what was right for kids, every second of every single day, and I can attest to that. So as a board, you should be very proud of this district and very proud of this staff because we're doing what's best for kids. And that's all I have.
Did anybody walk out of the stadium with any souvenirs from graduation?
No, they did not.
No?
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Wall, were there anybody taking out benches or anything, like Cleveland Brown Stadium?
Negative.
Jim Bax has that trough.
Thank you, Dr. Jama. From Board of Education, is there anything else to the board's standpoint? There's no executive session tonight, so with that being said, Mr. Gephardt?
I just want to say, I think we have a number of new teachers that are product of the Alaria City Schools going.
Absolutely. It's, in fact, Amy is putting out a, you got the Pioneer Press tonight, but something that I'm very proud of, as well as, and with the HR department and with our hiring teams, we are hiring local, we're hiring Alaria graduates, we're even working in hiring Alaria Catholic graduates, as you could see with Sean, when Sean was here. We are, we're hiring local, and we're trying to stay in-house.
Is Shane gone?
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah.
Just wanted to wish him well in his new endeavor. He'll be missed.
Anything else? Nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Moved by Mr. Gephardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion.
If, would we be in a position tonight to possibly clear up this item that we tabled?
Can we go back to an item tonight, an item we can? Okay. Then the motion to adjourn wants to recall that?
I will recall. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No.
Madam Treasurer, have the information on that calculation to share? Is that at our office?
Well, I don't have any more than you have in front of me, but if you look at the calculations and if you read the, how the state explains it, that's really all I know. And I know it's not going to be, I had initially said that it would be, the additional cost would be split to the 67 and 33, but that's not what it says here. It says that the first source of funds to pay the increased cost is going to be the interest and any reserve portion of the project budget. And when they, when we had talked about it, Paul, do you know, as far as the funding goes for this, can you help me explain why it's not an even 67-33 split on the hardening of the building, in your opinion?
Well, I think what I would need to say is that there will be a 67-33 split. I think the way they wrote it, with respect to the state, was sufficiently confusing over the 48 days down, but it might have just broken into two pieces. I can put in another call to pay, and I don't know, Mr. Elick, whether they get a hold of you, or not.
No.
If I wasn't either, I just told them that they called, and that we're curious about how they arrived at their numbers, because every meeting that we've had, it's been about 600, 620,000 on our part, and their part has been twice as much. And it showed that that's 2.5 million, that figure has never been discussed with court ever. So sometimes they put things on paper, they know what they do, and they call it that. They do have a sequence of how money is spent, per their rules, and they control even interest, even though it's our interest. There is some talk about giving them an excessive interest, and when you increase costs, there's a way that they could go about charging the district for what it costs and then contributing their own amount. But every discussion that we had, and this is why I needed to get Mrs. Parker out of the bump, it's 67-33. on the phone, it's 67, 33, not a penny more than 33 percent. But the way they wrote it is, and I went back and looked myself, it's very confusing. But it will not be more than 33 percent. It can't be more than 33 percent. The only way it could be more than 33 percent, the more I've thought about it, is that we bought Alibi space, locally purchased initiative space, they wouldn't pay their share of our extra space. That's possible, but it wouldn't be that much. In other words, of everything co-funded, it's two-thirds, one-third. But if we were to add, let's say 5,000 extra square feet something, they would factor in what 5,000 percentage, what percentage of that is in all of it. And since the hardening is a percentage of all of it, they would then charge us a full amount of hardening for our own space, if that makes sense. They've never had that discussion. I didn't think about that until after our discussion this morning, but that's the only rationale I could come up with. But I do want to reiterate something that the Treasurer brought up. With House Bill 21, the state right now, even more interested than clarifying this, I think, or he would have gotten back to me right away, they're trying to determine whether or not they want to pursue this whole hardening altogether. The Chronicle reported twice that Senator Manning passed this bill through the Senate. It was supposed to get hung up in the House. There wasn't a Speaker. They appointed a Speaker and just a couple of days later, they passed these massive large bills, of which this was in there, by a unanimous vote. I did ask Mr. Cransell if he could give us direction, he said nothing official. I said, your, your attitude in the past, the commission's attitude in the past has been, if it's not required, you don't pay for it. In other words, an auditorium, a stadium, purchase of land, it is very clear, we're not going to buy today. So he said, I don't know that we would deviate from that, I can't tell you for sure, but I can't imagine that we would deviate from that because even though that's costing us a considerable amount of money, their share was twice as much as us and this was only one district and they had to come up with all that money in the last minute. So my guess is it will probably not happen, that it's going to, while it's in advance, now it's moratorium that lasts until September of 2019, that they will not fund more than we've already done. They will of course pay their portion of any work that's already done, but that's been minimal because we're not in the construction. Senator Manning also went on to say, in that article, what she quoted, and I had an opportunity to speak to her, she said it again, they want to reexamine the law and they wanted to give us a break, all the schools that got caught unawares, but they also wanted to have a year and a half to reexamine the need for it to begin. And there seems to be a 50/50, at least, yes, they sort of go away permanently. But they would not charge us more than a third, unless, my guess is they would charge us the full amount for any of our own spaces that were outside of their shared space. But with our re, our new hand, our new redesigned plan, a lot of those extra spaces went away. So that's the only rationality you can use. As far as understanding those numbers, I looked at them after we hung up and I called them and I think they are, they are confused.
Do they ever come back and adjust in credit for the changes? For example, if you said 2.5 and our limit would be a third, would be about 800,000, yet we're applying 1,437,300, would they come back and?
Yes, they do. They reexile all the time. They do occasionally make mistakes. They never intentionally do anything, but there are some things that happen because there are so many things that they play. But I, I don't, I don't believe any of us unfortunate have ever heard the figure 2.5 to 1. Ever. We heard a little on the June, and the one that comes to my mind more often than I is 180, the 1-9. And that made sense because the number in all of our minds was about 640, 640,000. And we got minutes to reflect that in a prior reading. So when I saw that, I thought, well.
But this is about more than just the hardening, correct?
Well, I thought we were talking about the hardening.
I know, but this, this amendment has to do.
The amendment is everything.
Right.
The amendment is everything. The amendment is the whole new redesign. But I believe you're going to be looking at a different amendment within the next couple of years. This was unfortunate that the timeline happened the way it happened. No one's had any control over Senator Manning's action and no one that I'm aware of thought for a minute that it was going to sail through that fence. And it did. And it's interesting because these are the same people that passed the original law again. So I believe they wanted to rethink it. It went very quickly. There is a 90-day waiting period before something goes into law once the governor signs it. And Governor Manning, I think he shared with Dr. Jama and myself, both of us, that if we determine this to be an emergency in nature, like you're getting jammed up like you are now with people bringing you things that pass and then having them go away, perhaps if you go to a 30-day going to effect. There is a provision, if she can demonstrate and others, and I don't know that process. I'm an administrative agent or social legislative agent, you're telling me what pays in from 90 to 30 days, how much of an emergency it has to be. Usually I think that's for laws protecting against a teenager. But I did bring that up. I think, I think your question on that generally regarding the hardening, it probably go away. But the rest of it, I think should be articulated to you and I think we need to get somebody from the state to stick with you and all of you and make it comfortable with their figures.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think until we have an idea of the interest applied that we could.
They did place this deadline on us of June 22nd, but they placed that on us before House Bill 21. And I know that they have a very hard drop date interest requirement. That's when all budgets are approved by the state, both new bond issues coming on board and existing bond issues, master plans that are to change. That is a hard requirement.
We'll just leave the item and the tabled items until we get answers. If we have to have a special meeting prior to the June date, then we will do that. We have a motion in the second on the floor to adjourn. Is there any other discussion? See you in the next, Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Gephardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.